Point taken.
Thank you. Call the community hall, Village Guard, at 6:07. We have five trustees present in here. And trustee R. Harper is excuse. We have one item this evening, which is strategic planning for diversity, equity, and inclusion with Dr. Deborah Planks. And she will be doing the facilitation. And so I will hand it over to Dr. Planks whenever she's ready.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Unless you need us to do anything else.
Well, what I thought we attempt to do is use Mentimeter as a tool for communication this evening. And so what we need to do is go to, you see the instructions up there? I'm hoping most of you that have computers or phones.
So can you use any kind of device?
I'm hoping, I know oftentimes individuals use phones, but I'm confident, or trying to be confident, that you can use your computers as well.
We should be working on my computer.
Okay. Does anyone have a problem with that?
Good for me here.
Yeah, let me just, I made it for good.
Okay, great. So you received a report for facilitation of strategic planning. And rather than walk through that, what I thought I'd do is utilize the Mentimeter. We can come back to that report if needed. Okay, so if you have any questions or concerns while we move through this, let me know. That report identified what your areas of focus are for from April to September. Identify some key questions for your consideration. Identify some definitions, and then gave some examples of inclusion and equity statements, vision and value, and mission statements. And so what we're attempting to do this evening is for you as the board to identify your mission and vision statements and your goal set. So if you, if we go to the next slide for Mentimeter. This is a process where you vote. And so let's check out how well the voting process and tool works. Which area of those two the village want to achieve first? Diversity, equality, equity, or inclusion? And if you have any questions about what those terms mean, let me know. In the report on page two, I included foundational terms for DEI, and it was those four terms. So we can go over those if you need. And let me know if you're voting, if you can't vote for some reason on your system.
It's letting me choose another one. Do you want to stand?
Yeah, so you've been choose up to two, I believe.
Okay.
Let me do all four.
Okay. Okay, well, what I'll be saying on this one, because obviously I didn't find two of this one. Only choose up to two.
Is there a reason that we're taking this, like you have to do one at a time? I mean, as opposed to taking it on? Oh, we have to focus on inclusion first and then diversity? Is that what you're asking of this? Yeah, I mean, I guess if there's a reason why I can't give them all, because the work seems be similar in many ways.
Right, and there's two answers to that. One, I'm wanting to get your priorities. If you had to choose, what is, are your individual priorities held to be included? Because some people will say, for instance, that diversity is a product of inclusion and equity. If you deal with inclusion and equity, you will naturally get diverse. And some people will say, well, the main focus we want is a diverse community and a diverse camp. Well, just because you bring in diverse individuals doesn't mean they come into an inclusive workplace or they're treated equitable. And without those two things, it doesn't work. So just to get an idea, and also to see if you had questions about what those terms meant.
It just seems like there's a distinction without a difference.
Your turn. She won.
It just seems like there's a distinction without it.
As far as me asking you all of these things, like you said, it's sort of like chicken and the egg, you know?
I mean, so that's why I guess I'm just wondering, are we doing this? But this.
Right, and part of it is, as I go through the work plan with staff, there may need to be a choice of, are we working? For instance, with the staff, one thing I learned from them is that they won't be able to get to inclusivity for all staff until they feel like they have an inclusive environment for themselves. So had I tried to move them to inclusivity for all, they weren't there. And they weren't going to get there, and the more I would push. So I had to back off and say, let's focus on how you feel. So yeah, in some ways you could say it's a forced choice. In others' words, other ways you could say, I'm gaining a feedback from you as to what your two top would be, if necessary. And if we have to choose, then I definitely know where you're coming from as a board. But hopefully, we'll be able to achieve everything. And this won't be an issue. Okay, so, but I'm glad that you identified equality as minor, because equality and equity are different. And so oftentimes, people will identify equity, meaning it's important that people have what they need, not that everybody has the same thing. Any questions, comments? Okay, let's go on to the next slide.
Well, actually, is this the net of everybody's responses now?
Is this the net of everybody's response? So let's go to the next slide. So I think I can leave these for you, because they may have your response.
Oh, they don't.
I love it.
So which of these statements helps the village describe its vision? And in this one, I believe it should be only two out of four.
We have everyone, we've got six responses.
Okay. Okay, so part of the reason I wanted to do the Mentimeter is because I was hopeful that this would make it easier for you to start talking about vision, statements, and mission statements, rather than starting from scratch. As a writer, I always know if I fill up a page and ask someone to edit and critique, they give me new ideas that I can build on. Whereas if I can go blank page, or even when I start writing with a blank page, it can be very difficult. So I'm trying to accomplish a lot in a short amount of time. And so any reactions as to, was it difficult for you to identify your top two? Or what motivated you? Because most, everybody chose the first one. So just some reaction or feedback would be welcome.
Yeah, I can just say, that first one, you know, kind of seemed like a no brainer to me. It just seemed to kind of fit the vision that I have, and kind of my way of thinking. For the second one, I was torn between kind of the other three choices. But I wanted to go with one that I thought was more proactive, which I was the only person who picked the last one, I think, promote. Respectful conduct, equal service to the ever seen our community. I went with that one because of the word promote. To me, that seemed like an action oriented, you know, mission statement. You know, it's a perfect statement to be like that. But I just thought that to be more action oriented is kind of what, how I envision it.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that's good to know. And just so you know, I didn't create these phrases. I took these phrases from the examples that I gave you in the report, thinking that we could build on those. Not that we're going to take their exact words, but we can wordsmith it to make it more our own. So let's then go to the next slide, which is what key words would you include in a vision statement? So you looked at examples from others, you rated what you thought you liked better. So here's your opportunity to identify some key words. And so you can write a few words or sentence, whatever works for you. And I believe you can do that, give us three examples.
Listen, let me hear. No, I didn't say that yet. But right now, just a short answer.
Right, sure. So has anyone got to your second response? Or are you finding that you've been submitted to with regular responses?
Okay, let me submit one short answer response. So I just put a number of words in short answer. But then it doesn't allow you to do twice.
Okay. Then tell me what you think in your one answer. And is that, was that sufficient for you?
Maybe yes. Okay, can we show that instance?
Yes, we can. It says, press enter to show answers and not destroy the mic.
I know, I thought it said five, but it does say.
It did, someone said.
So, Vajra, can you show building? Okay, so inclusive, allowing, welcoming, acceptable, welcoming, build, create, develop, inclusive, systemic historical barriers impact. And I'd like to hear some feedback as to why you chose what you chose.
I said, I am less than historical barriers impact, because I think it's important to sort of acknowledge the underlying, like why we talk about this and why it's difficult to achieve.
Sure. Right, because it's giving context to the situation. We just didn't wake up one day and say, oh, we need more equitable, inclusive society. It's based upon what has gone on in the past. And in one of the examples, they talked about marginalized communities. And so that would connect to why the groups that are being identified at times were needing to be treated in a more equitable fashion. There it that, and it's based on the systemic historical barriers and impact. Any other comments? Yes?
I use welcoming and inclusive. If you want to be more effective, a short concise statement is going to be the way to go. And I think when you start going into some language in DEI, it starts to read like someone's PhD from the education department, and the average person has a hard time. It's not as easy to process what they're talking about. And I think being welcoming, inclusive is very, is, it would be clear on many levels to someone, whether you're a sixth grader reading it, or you have a PhD in education.
Okay. Well, you bring. I'm sorry. You bring up a good point in that, just so you know how I'm envisioning this, is I'm going to take your comments and look at what you rated highly, and then try to draft a statement for your review. And then you can take that, because then you'll have something in, in writing that then you can edit if you'd like. And then we end up with a product.
Thank you.
So let's move on to the next slide. And then which of these statements helps the village achieve mission excellence? And so again, you should have to be able to make two shortly. So everybody's voted twice, right? And feedback as to why you made the choices you made? Any feedback here?
So I think I went with prioritize equity and foster a culture. And I went for a couple of, those for a couple of reasons, I think. You know, number one, I felt like, you know, again, those were kind of action oriented missions to work towards something and, and, you know, to make progress. And I like, you know, the two parts of it is that I liked about those together, where that they were really about the culture of the village as a whole, not just the workplace. And I want to make sure, like, you know, this is a whole community effort. The reason I didn't pick that ensure fair outcomes for folks in those who have been historically marginalized and included is because I look at that statement more as like the floor, like that's who it's for. And to do that, we're going to prioritize equity for those people who have been historically marginalized. So, you know, that's, I think that's the focus. But through those other statements, that's kind of my thought.
Okay. Okay, and so any other comments?
I think, I think foster safe, fair, inclusive workplace. I think that's our responsibility as a community, as a village, to staff. And then I want to foster a culture that would simplify teamwork and raise the competition. And values versus the idea of community inclusion. Again, that's a manageable goal. For the village, staff, and management. And, you know, I couldn't go up with primary, I just, I could be, I could be missing. But I thought I was going to be able to do the other two.
Let me ask you this. When I look at the two that we see, the highest scores, it seems more internal to the village as a whole. The workplace, and also the teamwork, the integration, that kind of thing. When you as a board look at this, are you looking at it as more internal to village government? Or does it extend to the village as a whole?
I think it's both. So I chose foster as a fair and inclusive workplace, and then prioritize equity as essential to the community quality of life. And the reason I chose those two is, you know, that internal piece is what we do have more control over. Because we get to determine what policies are and what the, you know, standards are. And that's something that we do have a lot more ability to influence and hold people accountable for achieving these goals and, you know, working in a way that we know is the right way to go. But then I do think that's a statement of our values and our goals, you know, to the rest. It says something to the rest of the village that these are our values and priorities as the government. And, you know, like while we can't obviously require other employers in the village to follow suit, we can set that example, because we know that things will be better if everybody is, you know, and working for the same goals.
And if done not correctly, but effectively, then what? Village government should have an impact and an influence on the rest of the village.
Exactly.
Any other comments?
I can choose the prioritize equity, because I think it is, it's good to use the word equity so that we are always grounded in that historical impact, since much of our, much of what we have in Shorewood is due to historical inequities.
And I think part of the challenge is how do you communicate that so people don't shut down?
I know, I, yeah, and I, I look forward to that conversation. And I guess the, it's like, we're, I'd probably get me a head miss off. But also the research shows, and, you know, directly impacted people show that when you don't, you know, indicate that, when you don't name it, it's like, it sort of gets locked out, you know, that experience. And so that's another place of just from the training they're done.
But I think this, and, and anyone feel free to challenge me on this, but my perspective is oftentimes you have the marginalized wanting to talk and express and communicate and be heard. And you have people who aren't in that group, sometimes feeling overheard. If you talk too much, you're feeling vulnerable, or put upon, or ashamed, or, you know? And so you have these two groups that, or whatever, for many reasons, haven't figured out how to communicate effectively. So they're talking at and not to. And so when you write something, at least from my perspective, the challenge is how do you write it so those marginalized don't feel like, oh, you just saw so this? And the other, other individuals don't feel like, well, you just put it so much in our face that we don't feel like we want to embrace this. And so it's that challenge of how do you communicate where everyone feels like they're part of the same team versus opposing teams? Because in actuality, I think what the, one of the goals is that, at the end of the day, we want to feel like everybody's on the same team. So when I start working with staff and I hear them feeling excluded, it's like, okay, I want them to want to make others feel included. And hopefully, by showing them their respect and getting them engaged and hearing their voices, they'll feel valued, then they'll feel more comfortable to allow people in the space and feel valued and respected. So that's really part of my strategy, acknowledging though we are where we are. And so how can we communicate in a way that respects all, all people? Even though our viewpoints are different.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I add one, one thing to that too? Because I think that's why I like those words prioritize and foster, as opposed to ensure, because ensure almost sounds like guarantee, you know, which may not even be possible, you know? But prioritize, with prioritize, I feel like that also includes all ideas and is open to take new, that isn't just saying, we're prioritizing this, that doesn't mean we're excluding that. We're just going in that direction and fostering this, we're working towards this. That doesn't mean we're not working on this as well, it's just, this is what we're fostering, you know, in the current moment, kind of thing. I like those two.
Two things come to mind, but they're really the same one. So we have faith communities in our village that do not allow women to preach. They do not allow women to vote. How, how does our diversity, equity, and inclusion not marginalize them? I mean, how do they? I have a hard time with some of this. Because I feel strongly about those two issues. I think that, but this is just my personal feeling.
Sure.
But these are faith communities in the village. And what do you do?
Well, I think one of trustee Lynn's comments before has not liking the word ensure. And when you mention that, that's meaning then not wanting to guarantee or force, or make people comply. And so I don't think the village government has, and no, please correct me if I'm wrong, has jurisdiction over those religious groups. No, no. So you can't force them to comply, or you can't tell people they can't belong. What you often do, and I think it's been historical, is you need people where they're at, and you make the progress that you can. And hopefully, if the village sets a wonderful example, as I'm confident you will, you will find more people who are joining with you to support that. And perhaps those groups will be influenced. But I don't want to act like that's within your control. And you could probably identify other groups doing other things that are not equitable and fair. But I don't think the village will be able to control them. I am hoping that the village will have some influence over the bid district. And others who, for instance, the bid district, I think, is doing great work and has ability to have great influence, but they're not keeping data on diversity. And for me, that's important, because you've probably heard it before. If you're not measuring it, then it tells me it's not a priority. But perhaps we can connect with them, and they will want to do that. And then slowly but surely, you start changing the dynamics of the community. You know, so you have a bid district, and maybe you get others connected. And then you start seeing momentum going in a positive direction. But I don't think the groups you're talking about are ready for this, or willing. And so I don't think they can be a priority.
One thing I would want to, I mean, you know, I don't really think that would be need in changing, you know, any big communities here, or a religion. But, you know, I do think it is important to have, you know, really have to see a statement of our values, which is important. And I think it sends a message to, you know, new entities that might want to organize here that, you know, hey, if we're not aligned with this, maybe we're not going to be so successful in a group. And in a place like Shorewood, maybe we should do things differently if we want to build the culture of Shorewood. And an example that comes to my mind is like, I think about the Shorewood Little League, you know, say, what a wonderful experience it is. And like, Shorewood Little League has girls that play baseball. And there are many little leagues around the country that would not let girls play. They say, well, no, you're softball, you play softball. So I think that if, you know, say we were having a new little league come and set up, and they wanted to say, hey, girls can't play, I don't think that would really be all received in this community. So I think there are, you know, still ways that this does happen in schools, even though we can't require anyone to change the way they operate.
Thank you for those comments. We're going to move to the next slide. What key words would you include in a mission statement for the village's strategic planning? So again, if you can write the So again, if you can write them phrase or sentence, and I need to double check the time.
Wait until it's all time ready. If we can allow like a five minute break, so.
Okay, so we can allow a five minute break at seven. Is that longer?
Oh, right. Okay. And the previous question that I asked about keywords was for the vision edition. Yes.
Any comments or discussion about what you wrote or something you see there that you have a question or comment on?
So mine is belonging inclusive measurable goals communication. And I'm not belonging in this one and in the question about the vision statement. And I just, I feel like that's, that's something that's come up a lot for me in my day job, when we have these DEI conversations, like they shift a lot of that from DEI to ME and like the concept of belonging is so important. Having learned more about that, it's just really been out of mind for me that, you know, I don't want people to just feel like, I want people who work here and live here to really feel like they belong. And I was like, okay, we let you in. But like, that they really are part of this community, they belong here and they are essential to the community. So to me, that's something that's just really important and how do we foster that sense of belonging? And I thought, you know, important to include in any strategic plan are, what are our goals? Like how are we measuring them? How are we going to know that we are successful? Because if you don't know, if we don't know if metrics are already determined whether we're successful or not, then we're wasting our reason. And then communication, I think it's just incredibly important both internally and externally because people shouldn't know this problem.
It's interesting you talk about belonging because the village, in some of my conversations with African Americans who have worked in this village, part of their concern has been they've been this diverse, people come in. But the sense of belonging and being valued and respected hasn't always been there. And so a couple of ways, just speaking off the top of my head, where people of color and in marginalized communities don't feel like they belong is if they're in a position of power and people are second guessing them. Where people want them to act in the norms and traditions, which can make them feel like, well, I've got to give up who I am to join this. A quick example is sometimes, not everybody, but sometimes people of color present. I'm, I'm not crazy about agendas, but I know to be accepted and viewed as professional and like I know what I'm doing and confident, I know that that little agenda can be very important. So I do an agenda. But in other cultures, you don't have to do agendas because you go with the flow and you're listening to where people want to lead you. But it's a much more humanistic, interpersonal way of operating than a structure. And so folks like me coming into a system have to fill out, figure out when do I show who I am and when do I conform? Because if I don't conform enough, I'm going to be written on. And people won't see my competency. And so that sense of belonging oftentimes is difficult for two reasons. One, because folks are challenged as how much do I have to conform and how much can I be myself? And the other is the community often isn't prepared and knowledgeable about how we can come with our own values and cultures and be just as competent. And because there's that fear, it's like, how can y'all fit in this box? And so that belonging is critical because you can hire, you can have fabulous hiring and equitable process and bring people in and orientate them and treat them equitably based on processes, procedures and policies. And you can put them on committee so they feel included. But if they don't feel like they belong and people are questioning their competency and all of that, they won't stay long.
Right. But yeah, and I, I just love, I don't want, I guess do like, I don't want anyone to feel tokenized and I've been in spaces where that seemed to be really be what was going on. Where it's like, well, let's just, you know, we've got one person of color on staff, let's invite them in. And it's like, yes, I'm sure that person also had great contributions, but it seems kind of transparent that people were including somebody because they needed to have diversity. And that's got to feel a lot great to not feel like you're being valued for your contributions, but like, you guys check the box. And I don't want people who work here to ever feel that way.
Yeah, you check the box and you feel like you're being patted on the head like, that was good. Or you feel like your words aren't, and, and I have to say, this may be true of women too, where you sit there and you make a great comment and then you feel like you got to wait a couple of comments for the real substantial valuable people on the committee to say the same thing. It's like, wow, Jack, how did you come up with that? Well, maybe you listen to Deborah. So it's those kinds of things. And the great thing about my, getting my certificate from Cornell is they talk about those kinds of situations. And they talk about how people can move past those. And so there's concrete things that can be done that it's not just someone feeling like they have to bust through the glass of belonging, but people on the other side can do things to help pull them through. So any other comments about what you've written as far as a mission statement? Hey, what I'll do with the vision and the mission statement, because sometimes people feel like, well, they do the same thing. And no, they're not. The vision is more as to future more out there, what we would love to be in a great world. And the mission statement is more concrete. And so I'll look at what you've written for both and try to divide it to give you what I feel is a valid vision and a valid mission statement based on your input. And again, you'll be able to words in this thing. So let's move to the next slide. So which of these areas of focus are most important for the village? So you get to identify those. And tell me how many you can vote on. I think it's four or, right, okay. Do you know?
Did everybody? Yeah, in the bottom right, it can see how many people were.
So any comments, questions, concerns about what you see here? Yes.
I can start, I said equitable hiring and equitable contracting and purchasing processes. I think those are reasons I feel like they're really tangible. Something that we can oversee, you know, something that we can influence, build processes for. And, I mean, that's something that from the government side we can work towards. I kind of, just for the sake of only picking four, looked in quality police and community relations and and quality and inclusive staff engagement, kind of into that equitable hiring and, and kind of processes. Since it's all, you know, kind of the one organization. But I think those kind of top four are, are really even. I also, with, with strong relationships with organizations and communities of color, because I was kind of thinking about that belonging word and thinking, okay, well, that comes with relationships, you know, relationship building from the start, especially in a community like Shorewood where so many of us are here because we grew up here or, you know, married somebody who grew up here and where we, you know, have a family move as a business here or whatever it is. We're already part of these organizations that we have, so many of us have historical connections to. And, you know, with the history of Shorewood being almost inclusively white, you know, that's, that's who it is. So that the relationship part of it. And I kind of looked into that alignment with Milwaukee County because I, I think the county is doing a good job working towards that and at least providing, you know, visions that we can build off of. And I think in order to to produce equitable contracting, purchasing processes, we need to work with the rest of you know, in order to do those sorts of things. So those are my thoughts.
My four were the ones that, like, kind of the four on the left and the four in the eyes. And the reason I went with those, even though I think Jerry makes a lot of great points, I feel like if you're doing those four things correctly, the other things kind of fall under it. Like if you are, you know, gaining attention about equitable hiring and, you know, contracting and purchasing and about quality community relations and qualities application, like you can't do those things without developing strong relationships with organizations and communities of color. And without community education, without training staff to do it. Then I do think then you, then we are aligned with Milwaukee County. So to me, like, the, the two most important were the ones, the equitable hiring and contracting and purchasing processes, like Jerry said, like that's something we have direct influence over and can action. But then the other thing, for the other two, for me, quality was the word that was doing a lot of work. Because if we do those things correctly and advised quality, you know, we're going to get all those other things that's in my thought.
So like the first four are the sort of the next we need to focus on, knowing that we're going to use, utilize communities of color and the other alignment with county education and training as tools that get us there.
That's the way I thought of it. Because like you said, you can't, you can't have, you know, quality relationships in the community if you're not having relationships with everybody in the community and everyone we want in the community.
And it's interesting because the first two, the hiring and the contracting are much more tangible in some ways. And there are groups we can connect with, there are systems we can copy that will help us achieve those. And communities of color and other marginalized communities often have informal networks and communication mechanisms. And they, you know, when Rebecca and Chris and I were working together to locate a hiring situation, we reached out to those, to different groups. And when I talked to them, they were like, yeah, we'd love to be connected with Shorewood. I've got a social media, I've got this system, let me, send me the information, I'll get it out there. And so it's, it's always interesting that in some like, what, vice? Well, I don't even know her correct title, but Dr. Chia Bay at UWM. She's what, like Vice Chancellor and works in the history department as a professor and is leading the university with diversity. But when she goes back to her community, she just received it well respected, but as a part of it. When Howard Fuller was superintendent of schools here, when he came to the black community, it would be like grandmothers and folks, Howard, you know, you didn't, you know. It was like, you have status, but you're part of that community. And they embrace you and they talk to you with respect, but down to earth. And so you can, those systems are there and, and those relationships and communication styles are there. So Shorewood can take advantage of that in a real positive way. So let's go to the next one. So here's your opportunity to say, we're there, we talked about the areas of focus, but if you had to talk about goals, whether they're related to those areas of focus or not, what would be three goals you want to make sure we achieve when we implement this plan?
Can you give me each step of the goal? Because this could be very specific. Or I can make this very vague. So I mean, it's for you, what would, what would a goal be? Just so I have a better understanding.
Okay. Well, a goal for me would not be hiring five people come. So I wouldn't, because I don't, I
I don't put that down.
Right. I think if you do the work, you will hire who you need to hire. And they hopefully will be a diverse group. So a goal, that's a good question. You could be as far. A goal might be, somebody help me out here.
I think I'm asking for, the reason I'm asking is ready? So you talked a little bit about purchasing, hiring, you know, things that I can fall within the scope.
Right. But those would be the goal, two goals, right? Equitable hiring, equitable hiring processes and equitable contracting. I mean, it's, it's a good one, they're good one, you know.
Well, yeah, you could, you could put ensure that the village of Shorewood has equitable practices. And under that could be hiring and contracting and purchasing and other things. So the question actually that I'm asking of y'all is, and I wouldn't put numbers because that feels resistant. But do you want to put those overarching levels? Or do you have other ideas that you don't even think we've touched on yet that need to be considered?
So here's what we're getting. Yeah, it's pretty informative. All right.
Okay, that could be good. So an example might be when we talk about the bid district, is a goal for your work to have overarching influence or expansive influence into the community. Or, you know, that's why I asked you, is this internal or is this more than internal? So is your goal to just be sort of narrow focused on government, which is a lot in itself? So is your goal to just be sort of narrow focused on government, which is a lot in itself? Or are you having that the work that you do has an influence and connects with other community partners?
Okay.
But I'm hoping y'all come up with better goals than I gave you examples.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So if I was smart, I would have given you opportunities to provide three goals, right? Let's hope I did that.
What did you expect?
Oh, yeah. We have a limit on how much we can write.
Yeah.
And if you think that something wasn't captured here, you can always send me an email if you want me to consider. If you have other comments or things you want me to consider as I'm focused again. So if I interpreted this right, President McKay, we could go to seven twenty-five and then take a five minute break. And that's what it feels like we're moving to. So can we just start talking while we're waiting a little bit on, what kind of goals did you come up with?
I guess can you remember what I wrote? Um.
I think you might be able to show those.
That'd be great. Uh, equal opportunity, clear objectives, community norms. Um. Clear objective, you know, I've talked about this a lot.
Sure.
Clear objectives, you know? Where are we doing, what can we reasonably do? What, you know, what we agree on to, if we want to do, um, and what can be positively affecting. Really, community norms, just sort of like a um, most acceptable. You know, what, what as a community are we going to put up with or not put up with? Um, you know, and then equal opportunity, I think is, was real important for me that everyone have equal access to. When you were starting talking about this, different hiring systems exist outside of the norm. Um, that everyone, you know, whether it's purchasing or hiring opportunities or what have you, that the opportunities exist for everyone that doesn't. You don't have to be someone special or have special access to something.
Right.
You have access to the. So. That's in my room.
Anyone else want to talk about what they wrote?
Yeah, I mentioned, um, so I wrote, uh, create and utilize equitable hiring processes for all departments. You know, I thought of it as like an internal thing, um, which is something more tangible that I think can be done and created and and built out, you know, over time within the government here. Um, and then promote community relationships with historically marginalized communities. Um, you know, I think from the board perspective is kind of what I was thinking, from what we can do there, we can promote these relationships. We can foster these relationships, you know, do those kinds of things in the community to help build on the culture in the whole community, you know, from a, from the whole community perspective. And then I wrote support housing initiatives that increase diversity. And then I ran into the two hundred character, didn't it?
Right.
But just again, that's kind of my idea from the board perspective is is, you know, supporting any of these kind of initiatives that are working on kind of going, getting over that historical, um, you know, problem we have here.
Anyone else? See, when I look at these, what I see is that in some ways you're reinforcing the focus areas that we talked about. Uh, you're reinforcing this idea of equity, inclusion, diversity of the home. But you're also providing some initial ideas as far as housing initiatives, which I think um, that's critical. And where does that fit into the plan? And um, and so for me, this is, this is very good. What I'll do is digest all of this and what Menominee does is send me all of this uh, to my email. So I'll have a record of everything that you've given me and I have my notes. Um, and then I will wordsmith and pull this again. Any more comments about this?
Okay. I used to want to give, I, yes, there were some things that I thought were really meaningful in the Whitefish Bay statement. And they talked about, um, they're committed to an ongoing learning, long-term transformation rooted in integrity, community, and transparency. And for some, I tried to type it in and it wouldn't take my three. I think I got you wrong. Um, anyway, it's on page five of your.
Okay.
Actually, and then you have four bullet points that I thought were meaningful too.
Right. And some of those bullet points tie into what we've been talking about with hiring and contracting and those kind of things that we. So. The Whitefish Bay talks about reviewing current policies to identify potentially prejudicial or biased practices, encouraging participation, enhancing representation across village programs, seeking opportunities to engage community members with diverse perspectives and becoming a lot of community partnerships between all racial, ethnic, and cultural groups. So um, those are embedded to some degree in what we've been talking about, but it's definitely a positive to pull those out. I like those as well. Um, what I want to make sure is I don't plagiarize anybody's thing, but definitely can take from because a lot of it connects with what we're talking about in June.
You can credit it. I mean, you could put a credit on it too. Back.
Um, so let's go to the last line. This is what Laura describes your assessment of what we've done. And then we'll move into more discussion, but just want to get a sense of what you think about this process, has it made the discussion of vision and vision, um, statements and goals setting easier or more frustrating?
I guess I add another one, it's going to be windy.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe I need to add another word, it'd be windy.
Oh, okay.
Oh, what is it? No. Yes. Um.
So. Well, that's good feedback, clearly. Um, because I think this makes it a process that's easier than me just talking and asking you questions without you being able to be a tangible feedback that responds to those. So I appreciate that. Uh, a couple of follow up questions. What have I missed in this discussion? What didn't I bring out that you were like, well, I hope he's going to get to that, but she never did it?
I'm very um, open, I didn't have a lot of expectations because um, and so nothing's standing out that we didn't get. One of my words was engaging and I really appreciated these, I'm not, I was not familiar with Menominee, but this was, I thought, a cool way to do it. Because it, you know, it's kind of affected everybody talking and it interacted. So I I appreciated that, but I don't really have anything that I thought.
Um, when I talk about the scope of work, I'm really looking at the work plan that you accepted the less time I'm going to do it. And so um, this that scope of work really looks at things that you need to do and there are more things that we'll be needing on hopefully in July, that's policy identification, citizen committees, in alignment with the county. And there's work I need to do before we talk about those, but just the grounded in that that is what I'm considering as the scope of work. And so I'm just looking to see if that's what you're expecting as well. That that work plan is what we focus on. And as we build that out, um, we build out a strategic plan. And then we, you can take and implement.
I think you have very much so. I think that um, you know, from all my expectations were, I think what you've done is is lay out that plan, you know, in a way that I think works certainly for for me and and that I think I can contribute to. I like all of these pieces that were taken, like it really does feel like a building towards something. And then one thing I kind of noticed from the the whole night, um, through this process of, which I appreciate this program as well, being able to see what everybody was doing. Um, and one of the words I run there was action oriented. I feel like throughout the night, everybody has been kind of driven into producing something and producing in a way that that's impactful and it matters. And um, so I, I just, just thank you because I do feel like we're on that path. You know, so that's what I mean.
And just so you know, the way this works, the way uh, Menominee works is thoughtful, means more than one person. The larger the word means, the more people who um, wrote that, identified that. But you can see that a lot of the words are, can be viewed as similar, but um, Menominee doesn't. Give you some cross word check, but it it is good to know that insightful thoughts were tangible, action oriented, encouraging. Um, definitely, because I want to make sure I keep on that path and delivers a quality product for you. Um, the other thing that I just wanted to mention, well, two more things I want to mention respectfully at the time, is the limb. Um, you know, I think it was mentioned that um, we want to be careful, careful about the language that we use so that people don't have to get a thesaurus to understand what we're writing. Uh, if you look at the examples from Glendale, Whitefish Bay and um, a federal organization, they wrote, I would say fairly lengthy and that they were about a page long. I'm just interested in in knowing what you're thinking because a mission, a vision statement can be one sentence. A mission statement can be one or two sentences. Um, the goal setting can be a few sentences and bullet points. Is there more you want? Do you want more context to this? Um, do you want history, you know, just to get a sense or, yeah, get that sense and then understand I'm going to do respectfully, I'm going to do what I think is needed. So you can then take, and so I may just do one sentence for mission and vision and the goals. Or I may add more to it and then you say, no, we don't want all that. Or you spark something, we don't want that, but we want this. But just for some more clear direction, what are you thinking about as far as that product, that vision, mission, goal setting?
I appreciate, I mean, just speaking from my perspective, I appreciate, appreciate it, clear and concise. So, you know, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't feel like we need a page.
Okay.
Um, again, I'm frankly, I'm less interested in vision, mission and more what he's doing behind the vision and mission. So if we, if we have two sentences, like actually implement the vision and mission arguments, that's more important to me.
Okay.
Um, than adding something that, you know, similar to Whitefish.
All right. Any other comments?
I agree with that. I hope to start, start with that clear and concise of the kind of multifunctional beings that came up. And then we can always add to it.
Uh, one of the reasons you're doing this is important is in part, when I met with staff at times, they said, we want to know where the board is at. We want to know what their view is of mission, vision, value. So in some ways, while we'll have this document, the more important thing is you're communicating to the staff what's important to you. And maybe some of them felt like, well, can we really start doing things without knowing where the board is at? So we take that away. Um, I have to say also, um, you have an engaging, insightful, opinionated staff, which I found um, lesson isn't quite the word. Um, valuable and encouraging and and good to work with because I would bring them things and to look at. And sometimes they would be like, well, we don't like this or we don't like that. And what I find though, Dan, is they're making me look at something a little different. And what I find though, is they're making me look at something a little different or hear their voices. And so I think having that dialogue has been useful. I say that in part to acknowledge them, but also to say, when I send you something, feel free to cut it off and, and tell me where you're at so that we have a good quality project. Anything else?
Yes. I just have a question. So I'm curious about alignment with Milwaukee County. So your company also is contracted by Milwaukee County, is that correct?
No.
Or you're not?
No. Thank you for asking that question though, because in 2020, 2021, I did some contracting with the department to help Indian Services in that county. And the work I did looked at, and I can say this in two minutes. The work that I did looked at how DHHS was contracting. It looked at their interview process, their scoring process. It looked at how many organizations they contracted with. And part of the findings was that they contracted with less than 180 plus organizations. They had a top 30. And that top 30, those 30 organizations received at least 65, 70% of the funding. And I really looked at what was going on and why it was happening, interviewed nonprofit leaders, looked at the diversity, the makeup, did a whole lot of work with findings and recommendations, worked with an internal group that they had. And that work that I did has been passed on to other departments because DHHS is viewed as one of the leaders in the county with the work that they do. So I feel very proud that I've contributed to that, but that's over. I worked briefly with Office of Equity, but have no contracts with them. But I can say, just to add to this conversation, the reason I think it's important to align with the county, and I have met with them three or four Zoom meetings in the last month and a half, is because oftentimes, communities tend to work in isolation. So you can have eight, nine, 10, 12 different wonderful efforts from the municipality and county, but they're going in different directions. And so my view is, we don't want to copy the county. And we don't have to do exactly everything the county does. But to listen to them, I think I'm learning from them and I believe they're learning from me. So that where it makes sense to be in alignment, we can. And maybe there's some sharing of resources and knowledge and strategic thought. So when I talk about alignment, it's to benefit us and, as well as, as them. And I think you already have some alignment with the county, with Brown Deer, with Whitefish Bay and others that work on different committees together. So again, not wanting to disturb that, but support that.
Yes, and literally one of, some of the questions ask us to kind of rank or, you know, choose, right? So, I mean, is this going to be also used as kind of both of what we keep in and what we don't keep in? Or, you know, is that binding in any way?
Correct. Work with the plan and everything? No. It's to help me understand where you're at, because the more I understand where you're at, the better I can provide the services that you want me to provide.
Thank you. Sure. But at the end of the day, we'll vote on this, right? The statement, the mission, vision statement, the mission statement.
Yeah, that's awesome. And so for me, the closer I get to articulating and communicating what you want, the better off for all of us and I use your time more wisely. Okay, aye.
Yes.
If you have
That's true.
I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
So I'm going to go in time. All right.
Never, it never happens.
Well, what happened in your reputation?
Well, I feel like you, I went a little overboard presenting the little plan when you had that closed session. So I was like, that's all right. Yep. So thank you.
Yeah, LinkedIn endorsement. Okay, let's see, we can adjourn the, could it be the whole? And are there any objections?
We should adjourn. So.
All right. Not seeing any objections. We are adjourned at 7:21. We have a break until 7:00.